Twenty-two, and we are going to start our study session. I am going to go with item eight. I'm gonna call that when ready. I'll know by Monday. Counselor Caldwell. Rashida?
I'm not seeing her name right now.
She's on me, I see her.
There she is.
Okay, you have items nine and ten.
Um, I don't, hold on. I'm having computers on my phone in my computers, hold on.
Counselor Caldwell, this is Commissioner LaFave. I can speak to these items if you'd like.
Go, go, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Julie LaFave, Commissioner Parks and Recreation. So I have two items for you, number nine. This is to amend the previous ARPA ordinance for, it was previously for $800,000 for the repair of Burnett Park Pool, as well as the water feature. Once they began repairs, they realized that there was additional damage that they could not have predicted. So I need to amend and request an additional $500,000 from ARPA funds out of, out of the parks allocations of it.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, Julie, what was, can you specify what the unforeseen problem was?
So I am going to look to see if engineering is on here because they have been the, the main department working with them. But my understanding is, once they started drilling into the cement, they didn't realize how, or, I mean, it was basically crumbling. They didn't realize the extent of how far back it was crumbling. They had to find, I think, a secure spot before they could start to repair and build, put the new concrete in. So basically, it was just, it was much further in disrepair than we ever could have anticipated.
Counselor, it's an ancient, it's an ancient pool. Literally, an ancient pool. And there hasn't been repairs to it in a long time. So I obviously, you know, heavily recommend that we do this, since it serves the entire near west side, too.
And this is Kelly Hagerty from Engineering. Julie just did a great job. That's exactly what happened. And while the engineers did go out there and sound the concrete, short of doing cores all through the whole thing and going all the way in, and we could have hit a good spot and thought it was fine, it would, it was really, it would have been very difficult to have predicted this.
Julie, do you know when, if this is approved, when this could be done?
I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna defer that one right back to Kelly Hagerty because the work has already begun.
So they had to demobilize for the winter. They're gonna come back as soon as the weather breaks. The concrete has all been repaired already. They've done all of the work as far as that is concerned. And then they come back and they, they do the final coating on the pool. When the weather, it has to be a certain temperature, even overnight. And then they have, they are doing some tiling work on the lane lines. And that has to have, that's temperature sensitive also. So we're anticipating, hopefully, March, April, and then it'll be ready in June.
The only thing that might be pointless to add this, but I'm going to add it anyways, is that the previous to the pandemic, this pool was grant funded, but the final approvals got held up because of the pandemic. So there's still a chance, research is still working to see if we can get some of those approvals. So there is a chance that instead of ARPA covering that this, that the grant funds would, but this is the worst case scenario that the ARPA funds would cover all of it.
Julie, a quick question. Will this increase by off the other, the other budgets that we still have to see to, to implement within, within other parks?
So as the mayor laid out, you know, what he wanted to see the ARPA funds go towards, there was a specific dollar amount for parks projects. Parks has not gone for all of our projects because we knew that this was potentially going to happen. So if it, so I guess the answer is yes, it will impact parks projects that were to still be authorized. But it should not impact any other departments' plans.
And if I could add, this is like a straight infrastructure program that will serve the needs of the entire west side and the near west side. I mean, this is exactly what the American Rescue Plan had in mind as far as like funding programs in municipal areas like Syracuse, so.
Thank you, Pat. I was thinking specifically, you know, of the discussions we started with Kirk Park and the Jubilee Park. You know, just wondering if.
It doesn't, so we had other projects that we have not brought to council yet. So it doesn't necessarily have to impact the, the anticipation of hopefully doing a Kirk Park or a Jubilee project because we had other projects, we had other projects in mind, too, that we could put to the back burner or, or put towards the capital end of it.
Thank you.
So Julie, can I ask you a question? When it comes to the capital money? So this would eliminate us having to use some of our capital project money, correct?
This was never, this, this project was never in our capital plan because it was grant funded. But then the grant funding, the final approvals, so it, it, it never really specifically was in the capital plan.
So Julie, if we didn't have these ARPA funds, then this pool would probably be closed this summer?
Well, so what you have is, the construction has already begun. So if we don't get this approval or funds from some other source, you're gonna have a half repaired pool that won't get open.
How, how are the other pool compared to this pool, Julie, such as Anadaga, Thornton? How, how bad, how bad are they?
So all of this, all of the city pools are in pretty rough shape. However, if you recall the last year or so, working with the council, you know, we've, we talked about how parks hopefully gets a larger investment. So we have submitted a cap, an aggressive capital plan to try to put more into our pools so that we can do a full assessment, or as close to a full assessment of our pools as we can, so that we can prioritize. How many pools do we have in a near state like Burnett versus how many are, you know, 10 years away from needing this? But so we're trying to address that with, with the next capital plan that's being presented to you.
All set? Alrighty. Counselor Caldwell, you have item ten.
Okay, the other item, number 10, I have before the council is, National Grid has created and it's brand new. A few initiatives, one is Adopt a Park Program. They reached out to us. They themselves have admitted, not admitted, but they, they're still writing the details and the scope of this program. But they would very much like to fund programming in the city, Adopt a Park Program. So they, they'd like to see us apply sooner rather than later because they're gonna start doing their first approvals. And once the money is gone, the money is gone, they hope to start approving this month. They would like to fund projects in the city, city parks, often under third parks or ones that don't get much investment in them. They haven't, they don't have a full scope of what they will invest or how much. But in speaking with them, they felt, you know, it sounded like up to 50,000. They're looking at projects like small shade structures, benches, something like that. This is the request to apply for that. I had to get this application in two weeks ago, and that was the day after we met with them. So we have not yet decided what the application will go for. But I wanted to get this request in because they would like to see an application from us in the next two weeks, if possible, if council approves it.
Any questions from council?
Today, Julie, would, would that involve them? Would this be like, you know, in, in some parks where, you know, like Wegmans, for example, with Anadaga Lake Park, they, they kind of, you know, have some branding involved? Would, would that be part of National Grid's aspiration?
I didn't get the intention, or I didn't get the impression that there was, they'd name anything. They might want to do a signage, you know, just that this was funded through this. But I didn't, I didn't, I can send a link to this grant, to the council. There's not a lot of information there.
I, I, I think, I think it's great. I was just curious. It sounds, sounds like a great, great project.
I think it's great that they reached out specifically to us as they want us to be in that first round before the money goes. And they very specifically don't want to go into those big parks. They don't want to go into the Thorntons, Anadagas, Burnett. They want to go to parks that don't get much, don't get much compared to others.
Nice.
Julie, can you also let the council know if this is, so this can be used for any of the parks, right?
Yes, and yes, with no match required from us. They would, in fact, they'd like to see multiple parks. They don't, for that 50,000 or up to 50,000, whatever they approve, they do not want to see just one project in one park. They'd like to see the same project in a few different parks.
Sounds good.
Julie, I remember we had discussion, for example, at Anadaga about finding like dog leashes. Now, those, did you say that they, those would qualify under this?
Do you mean dog, dog waste bags or dog leashes?
The, the sign that, that say, yeah.
I got the impression that they wanted to see something that people will use. So yet that would, it sounds like it would qualify by dog with stations. I apologize for being vague. They explained it to me that they are already in the air, learning how to fly the plane. So I think they just got these funds and they're, they're anxious to start awarding them out.
Alrighty. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have items 11 through 17. So item 11, the first one is the agreement with Syracuse University. So in the last meeting before the end of the year, I had suggested that the Thornton Park portion of it be broken out so we'd be able to pass just the agreement as it is. As an alternative, I also have spoken to the administration and made some recommendations about how the language could be changed in the Thornton Park portion of it that I felt would preserve the city's autonomy over the park. I shared that with other counselors. So just sent that over to the administration recently. So I think there's gonna be the discussion between university administration. So from my perspective, that's where this item stands. But obviously, if there are new counselors or anyone else wants to ask any questions, I'm.
So with the amendments, they are removing the UNSAC agreement from what we're voting on, on item 11, or not?
So item 11, that's in our books right now, is the same as what it was before the end of the year, which the feedback from the council, in my opinion, was that we weren't comfortable with that. So I have proposed changes to the language that would include the UNSAC, but then also would change the language in the Thornton Park portion that I personally be comfortable with and many of the counselors.
Okay, I just wasn't, I'm not comfortable with the agreement as far as giving our, a portion of our parks over to Syracuse University. And I understand now they're just stating that, you know, it's for maintenance and repairs and upkeep. But realistically, I just, I can't wrap my head around an organization volunteering to do something and then not expecting something in the long run. And just from speaking to a lot of my constituents that live in the area and that frequent the park, they just weren't in support of giving our park away, so to speak.
Counselors, this, this is Commissioner Michael Collins for Neighborhood and Business Development. And as I've spoken to previous counselors and welcome to the new counselors on the overall agreement, Counselor Allen certainly understands the concern. And we've, we've tried to make sure that it's clear within the language that those concerns could not actually be realized. And as Counselor LaFave, or Commissioner LaFave has spoken to, any, anything that even came close to us being able to give away part of the park would require state action at the state level. It's, it is against the law and would take, would take action from the state legislature and be signed by the governor for that to even be.
So would this be something in about, say, five years from now, they would go back and approach the state and then we'll go through that process? Like, is that, I see somebody is on from Syracuse University, but is that a thought as of right now? I know you can't predict the future per se, but.
Well, I, so you're absolutely right, can't predict the future. I will say Walnut Park's been part of the previous agreement. There's, there's never been any talk about that. That, that's just, that's of, of no interest to the city. And we have no reason to believe that, that SU would have any interest in that either. The, the ability of, of SU to do some maintenance in that area simply means that the area around their investments is, is looking as good as possible. And, and that benefits the neighbors and it benefits SU's interest. So it's, it's, it's something that benefits all of us when, when we can have more hands. As Thornton Park Association itself does a fantastic job of volunteering to do maintenance in the park themselves.
This is Commissioner LaFave, if I could just speak to that, too, as well, Counselor Allen, just because I feel like that is one item that keeps coming up that is a little confusing people or miscommunicated. But this, this agreement would have no bearing on if, five years from now, if somebody, if somebody from the city wanted to sell part of the park to SU, this agreement would have nothing to do with it. It's a completely separate process that has to go through the state. I mean, I don't think it's the intentions of anybody from the city to sell any of our public spaces. But this agreement would have no bearing on that at all. And this agreement also doesn't turn over portion, that portion of the park to SU. It's sort of along the same lines of, as, you know, Thornton Park Association has taken special, let's say, Rose Society. The Rose Society only has an interest in the Rose Garden, right? But they don't own that portion of the Rose, Thornton Park. It's, it's a very similar apples-to-apple comparison if you look at it that way. SU is not looking to have any ownership or rights to any portion of the park.
Hi, Counselor, it's Kristen Smith. I just wanted to add that any, any disposal of, of city property would also require council approval. So it would never happen without being before this body as well.
I was wondering to allay the concerns of some of the counselors regarding this agreement. Could we maybe start off on maybe a basis of when any requests come in from SU regarding maintenance of Thornton Park? Could we like perhaps run it by not only the district counselors, but also the Chair of the Parks Committee, which would be Counselor Caldwell, just to start off there, Commissioner LaFave?
I'll, I'll reserve that to Michael Collins, if that's something that could be added.
Michael, you don't see a problem with that, just so we can get this off on a, maybe a congenial basis as far as like, just so we're aware of what's happening up in that park and especially the district counselors and, and the Chair of the Parks Committee would be aware in case they got any calls from any of their constituents?
Yeah, so Counselor, I, I think that working with, with Commissioner LaFave, we're absolutely, through all of this, happy to have as much clarity and make sure that, that there's transparency about the process. I, I think we, you know, we could certainly work with all parties to discuss a way in which my, my only, the only thing that I want to be careful of is any sense of approval that would then delay regular maintenance to a park. But, you know, beyond that, what I, what I think I'm hearing from you is, hey, let's make sure that there's awareness of what's happening and, and there's transparencies. Do I have that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we can, we can work with the Commissioner to, to make sure that there's, there's good communication.
And that's, and Counselor Hogan, this is something I spoke to Commissioner LaFave about as well and Commissioner Collins. I would note that, you know, in the initial agreement, the language might have been a bit fuzzy. But in this, in the second version of the agreement, we've definitely made it, got some more clarity on the distinction between routine maintenance and more, you know, projects that would require, you know, for example, removal of trees, et cetera, et cetera, would require the sign off of the arborist and, and the commissioner, you know. So I think we've kind of separated into, you know, making sure the necessary paths of approval are there for anything beyond routine maintenance. So it's kind, you know, I think which is, which is what a lot of the community was concerned about. And I think we've kind of made that language more specific and, you know. And, and I, I would concur with you. I don't need to be updated if there's gonna be, you know, cleaning, cleaning of snow from paths. But if we plan on doing anything major, please, you know, keep the, the district counselors in the loop and the, and the parks commissioner so that, you know, if we do take, if we do end up taking this leap, that we make sure that we, you know, are kept in the loop.
I understood. Transparency is very important.
Questions from other council? Okay. Items 12, 13, 14, and 15 are legal settlements. So we'll discuss those in executive session on Monday. And item 16 and 17 are related to a tentative agreement with the Firefighters Union. Counselor Majkic and I spoke, and we think it'd be most helpful to hold a joint committee meeting between finance and public safety so that everyone has enough time to go through all their questions on it. But Corey, if you want to just kind of tee up in a brief level what this item is for everyone so they can start thinking about.
Sure. Thank you, counselors. So this is, you know, an agreement with our Firefighters Union, Local 280. The, it's a five and a half year agreement. They are out of contract as of January 1st of 2021. So it would run through June of 2026 as outlined in the, in the legislation, you know, there, it is a 3% wage increase. That's what we're proposing for each year. And then 1 and 1/2% for those last six months. There are, you know, I won't get into too many details here unless anybody has any specific questions. But there are items in there related to professional development. There are, you know, healthcare contributions, a lot of the priorities, shared priorities both between the leadership of the fire department and the firefighters themselves. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but I don't want to get into too much detail if, if we'd rather wait till the committee meeting. And I'd also be happy to meet with, with any counselors, either before or after the committee meeting as well. If there are additional questions that you'd like answered in advance or ones that we might not get to in the committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Corey. So Counselor Majkic and I look forward to settling that meeting. We'll welcome there. So.
Counselor, if I could just ask the administration that we make sure the budget director is at that meeting that you're planning, too, so we can find out exactly where this money is all coming from and how it fits into the overall budget. Thank you.
Of course.
Those are my items, Senator. I don't know if the president, maybe.
President Hudson, your call. Counselor Hogan, it's your call.
Oh, thanks, President Hudson. I have items 18 and 19. Who is, who's gonna speak to 18?
Counselor, Counselor Hogan, Owen Kearney with the City's Planning Division. I can answer any questions. But just generally, this is a request for a contract time extension with EDR companies. They, we have been working with them for about two years on a plan around the, basically Salt Springs, Lemoine Campus. We're nearly complete that work, and this is a request to extend the contract with EDR, who's serving as our consultant, professional service consultants, so they can complete that work and complete the project. So happy to answer any questions. There's no change to the budget. We're the scope of work, just merely a time extension.
I have no questions. Any questions for my colleagues? Is Counselor Driscoll, this is your district, correct? Are you, have any questions? You okay with this?
Yeah, no, we were, we, you know, I've been in, I've been discussing with Owen along the way. I was just curious, when you think we could get a presentation? I saw Sam Gordon, he told me things are progressing along, you know, when we could get a presentation, at least myself. And I know President Hudson was involved in the, the RFP process as well. Just like to get an update on how it's going, where we are with it.
Happy to schedule that sooner than later, Counselor Driscoll. That could be as soon as, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do it by the end of this month. So I'll reach out to you and, and find a time to do that. And happy to have the whole council there or anybody that's interested. We, we've done some good work over there. And excited to share that with you.
Great. Would you reckon, would you think that might be good as a committee meeting, Owen?
Yes, I think it would be.
Okay, if you're, if you're okay with that, Counselor Hogan, I would appreciate that.
Yes, I'd love, love to hear. I might make sure we take care of the Jesuits up there. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Owen, any other questions for my colleagues? Okay, and our next, my next one is a special permit, item 19. I believe this is the same situation. I, I think myself and Counselor Driscoll had had some issues with this at first, and I think might, maybe they might, might have been resolved. Is this Heather? Heather, are you on?
This is, and I am, and Happy New Year, and.
Happy New Year to you, Heather.
Yeah. Welcome to the new counselors. My name is Heather Lamandola. I'm the zoning administrator, for those of you who don't know. This special permit is for the Palace Theater. And there was an amendment to the floor plan, the site plan, and also to the signage. And the commission waived the signage and the off-street parking requirements.
So was that signage issue taken care of?
Yeah, and I kind of want, yeah, it was. I just want to clarify, it's actually not for the Palace Theater. It's the property, it is the Palace Theater property that happens to have two special permits. One for their banquet room within the theater and then also, which is technically a restaurant. And then also this restaurant on the first floor, which if you're looking at the Palace Theater, it's on the right-hand side. So that's what this special permit is for. It was not in compliance. And through a series of events, it was noted that it, it was not into compliance. The owner came in and requested the amendment, and the commission did pass that.
Well, I appreciate your efforts on that. I'm sure Counselor Driscoll does, too. So, so I will call both these items ready. President Hudson, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Majkic.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item 20 through 24. The first four items are fire, and the last item is police. So since the police has one item, I would like to have them go first, and then we can come back to the fire item. Chief Cecil, are you there?
I'm here, Counselor. Good afternoon, Joe Cecil, First Deputy Chief with Syracuse Police Department. Congratulations to the two new counselors. You ran a great grassroots campaign, and it was impressive to watch. The only item we have for the police department on is the contract with the city school district for the SROs, the School Resource Officers. I think this is gonna be, this is the best contract I've ever seen with regards to the school district. Typically, we pay for five, they pay for four, or we, or they pay for four, we pay for five. This particular contract, they're gonna pay for all the SROs in the schools. At least six, up to 10, plus the sergeant. They're gonna play, pay their full salaries and the fringe on the salaries.
So Chief Cecil, I, I see that that's, that's a cost of $97,969. Now, would that be multiplied by, by, by five, or is that just what it is?
So it's probably, my guess is it's the current, well, yeah, if you look at the letter, they're going by the, what they call step five officer, which is $73,855. And then they add the 7.65 for the fringe. That number you're talking about is probably what we currently have in the school, which is six SROs and one sergeant.
Counselor Kristen Smith, I just jump in here. I, I don't think that's, I think that number, like Chief just suggested, is just really part of, of what the district will be paying. The cost for six officers plus a sergeant will be significantly higher than that. But as, as Chief said, the district is paying 100%. This will cost the city nothing.
Kristen, is this a one-year program, a one-year contract, or is this a several-year contract?
It is a one, I think it might be two years.
It says two years.
Two years, yeah.
The reimbursement, so it's $97,000 the first year, and then I would assume it would be the same the second year as well.
Well, it actually would go up because the collective bargaining agreement would cause the salaries to go up. And so that adjustment would be passed along to the district. Basically, the, the.
um, that adjustment would be passed along to the district. Basically, the just, the, the, this, um, the police department invoices the district for actually the actual cost.
So one quick thing, as, as I'm reading the letter, it's ninety-seven thousand per S R O.
Right, per S R O.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, Kristen, would it make sense to, uh, explicitly spell, spell it out that what, what the amount is as opposed to just us assuming that that's, that's what it will cost? Because I, I, I do see that there are six, you know, and there's ninety-seven thousand, but probably makes sense to, put in the whole amount that which is ninety-seven times whatever, six or, or something like that.
Are you suggesting in the ordinance or in the contract?
Say that again?
Explicit, making it explicit where, counselor?
So, so, uh, on, on the contract and then on the letter here, I do see that it's ninety-seven thousand and I'm wondering, you know, is, is, probably makes sense to, to, to put in the whole amount in here and in the contract as well. As opposed to just say ninety-seven thousand or, or that how it is done contractually?
I think the way that we did it is, it, um, is, is preferable, which is to say, state that they are responsible for the full salary and fringe as reflected in the collective bargaining agreement. That gives us, that's better for us because as those numbers change, um, we're not locked into a dollar figure. Because we don't, you know, because different police officers make different amounts of money based on how many years they've been with the department. So say we substitute out, um, a more junior officer for a more senior officer. If we're locked into a dollar amount, then we're stuck with that. The way it's written now, if there's any fluctuations in the, um, compensation for the assigned officers, we're all set, we're covered.
Other questions? Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
How many, how many S R O's are we, uh, are we contracting with?
It would be, uh, council, it would be, so they're going to pay for at least six and up to ten and, and one sergeant, plus one sergeant.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, chief, how many, uh, S R O's do we have currently right now?
I, I believe it's, and DC Trudell's on here, but I believe it's six S R O's and one sergeant right now. Rich, is that correct?
We started off with six and one, chief, but, uh, recently, um, we had to add one for Henninger. And then we added a second, knowing that we were going to make a promotion soon and that officer needed to get up to speed. So we're at a total of eight right now in the schools, knowing that one will be coming off with a promotion in the relative, uh, relatively soon. And that's why the, the dollar figure is, is fluctuating because if, if the folks are assigned to the school, we're getting reimbursed. And if they're not, we won't be.
Counselor Majak, if I can add something?
Sure.
Um, also, you know, Joe mentioned the, 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 contract itself, the, the process to get here was probably, um, I haven't been with the, um, working municipal government as long as, um, um, uh, First Deputy Chief, uh, Cecil, but probably the most extensive, I would guess. Um, it really took into account the stand of the city, the police department in the role of the S R O's in the schools and that, um, our stance is that we're not there to police or, or, or manage behavior, but to really be there, um, as an asset for, um, criminal activity that may go on or around the campus. Um, we also, um, really talked about the, um, cross-training opportunities there are, not only on the, um, educational side for the officers, but also on security for the teaching staff, so.
Thank you. Now, now Chief Cecil, are, are they, when, when you assign them, are they solely dedicated to the job or can, can they come back to the department and do other things?
Uh, those that are assigned to the schools are one hundred percent S R O's for the school.
As is the sergeant supervisor over that, correct, Joe?
Correct.
Chief Cecil, is there a job description, um, pointing out directly what the S R O's are charged to do?
Oh, sure there is. There's definitely a job description, but as the deputy mayor mentioned, it's spelled out in the rather lengthy contract as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Chief Cecil, I have a question. Um, Chief Cecil, this is council caller. Um, I would like to know how do you pick the S R O's? Like, is there like a vested process? Um, is it something that the officers can, uh, you know, reach out or how does, how does that work?
Sure. Great question. So we post that job just like any other job. Officers put in a transfer for it and then they go through an interview process. Not only, and this is unique, not only with us, S B D, but they then follow up with a, uh, interview process with the school district as well. Um, and have to pass both those, have to be accepted by both.
Uh, chief, um, is there any specific, uh, training or anything that they have to go through to be an S R O or is it just through an, a interviewing process?
So it's not necessarily training before they become the S R O, but they go through a lot of it after they become an S R O. And, and to be honest, if the training is, if the, if the timing of the training comes, um, and we know that they're going to be the S R O, the new S R O, we will send them to the training before. But typically it happens after they get to the school. Um, as the deputy mayor mentioned, there's a lot of cross-training that goes on, uh, with the school district and the police department to make them, uh, perfect for that job. Uh, because it is clearly different than any other job, uh, on the police department.
So do you have, I see the capacity is kind of lim- limited with only, you said between six to ten or six to eight? So in that case, if, um, say, for instance, especially now with COVID, if you have five, um, officers that have to be off, like in the same day, do we have enough that are cross-trained to be able to fill in those positions?
Um, yeah, so you mean, oh, I see what you mean. Yes, counselor, we would, typically we would ta- just take people from patrol, but we would try to be selective, uh, with that as well, but, uh, we would have.
They wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't be necessarily trained embedded to work in the school system, correct?
That's it. Yep, that's accurate. Yep.
So is there a way that we could maybe start offering more training to additional officers? So we'll know that we'll always have, um, extras if needed?
Can I jump in there quick?
Go ahead, chief, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, so, um, we, in the beginning of the year, we, uh, put out a, uh, an email to our officers, ask if anybody's interested. And we have a selection pool that's limited within patrol that has additional knowledge when it comes to working in the school. And then what it is, is basically officers that have aspirations to become SERP officers are our pool. Now, Chief Cecil is correct. If we exhaust that list, then our, um, they are specially trained. They have additional training on top of patrol officer. Then we're forced to, uh, bring in patrol officers, but our first line of defense is those officers that have requested it and, um, have the additional knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Chief Cecil, uh, does, does schools have, um, preference in terms of, uh, S R O's that they want? Or, or is it just, uh, like a lottery kind of thing?
Uh, but, uh, Rich, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, certainly. Um, so some of our, um, officers have been in the SERP program for years and they are assigned to a school and, and the school and the principal are familiar with the officer that's in the school. Um, for example, we just transferred Officer Hendricks into, uh, the SERP, uh, world and she is, uh, shadowing with Mark Vella at Fowler. Um, so, but what, you know, so there's not really a selection process based on the principal. It's just what's been, uh, established in the past. What I will say, and I think this is getting to your point, is prior to the school district, uh, season starting, the supervisors of our SERP section met with each of the principals. Um, at each of the school, got a general sense from them on operating procedures, what they were expecting, what we expected. So we kind of go into each school tailored to some degree, um, to what the principal and the supervisor understand for each of those schools. You know, above and beyond what's in the M O U as a general concept or a general plan, but, uh, each, each school has a, has a unique way.
Other questions? All right. Thanks, Chief Cecil. Thank you. Uh, that'll be it for that. Are we okay pushing this forward, uh, councilman, council Driscoll and council caller as well? Good to go?
That sounds good to me.
We don't, we don't have to do that anymore because it's not a committee meeting. So it's already on the agenda.
Yeah.
So you don't need our approval.
Geez, okay. Uh, fire.
Good afternoon, counselor. Uh, Dan Downs, First Deputy Chief of Fire. Uh, we have items twenty through twenty-three on the agenda. It's for authorization for capital funds, uh, for two vehicles in our vehicle replacement program. Uh, it would, one would be a straight stick aerial ladder and the other for a heavy rescue. Uh, this is a fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we are asking it this time because it's roughly a sixteen-month build out for each vehicle. Are there any questions?
Yes, I, I, you know, I've been here two years and it seemed to me every, every year, um, we are asking for their practice to, to, to be purchased and which, which is, which is great. Uh, we have the ability to do it. But how many, how many, how many are we looking at even? Where, where are we trying to go? What, what number is an idea? Cause when I saw it in the contract, you know, Chief, Chief Bond did express that, he, you know, he's, he's trying to get us to a certain number. And what, what is that number?
Yes, sir. Other than, uh, a specific number, what, what we have is a replacement program that is where this should be pretty much the end of getting us back up to speed so that we're not asking for multiple, multiple vehicles every year. Uh, a heavy rescues lifespan, uh, is roughly ten years total. Some of the end of its years would be used as a spare. And our engines and trucks, we're trying to replace roughly one or two a year rather than to come to council and ask for five or ten in a particular year and then none the next year. So that it's a gradual, uh, replacement program. That answers your question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, the strategy is great. I'm just, just wondering, it might, I think it goes to, uh, the point Madam President made, I think, uh, the first year got on, to kind of like see where, you know, give us, give us the list of what is going out, what need to be replaced and, and stuff like that. It might be good, especially since we have new councilors to, to, to forward that, to forward the same list to us, all of us, just to refresh our memories a little bit. Would that be possible?
Yes, sir. I have that right in front of me as the, each vehicle and its life expectancy and when we expect it to be going out to, for lack of a better phrase, out to pasture, um, and when it's time to, uh, replace. So we have a, a Sutfin truck that's going to be going out, um, next year. Hence the reason this replacement, it'll take about a year to a year and a half to build out. And we'll be back up to par for our fleet. But we do have a, a program for every vehicle in the fleet that you're welcome to take a look at any, in all of it.
Okay. Other questions?
Uh, councilman Majak, I, I maybe I can, uh, uh, question to the administration. So the decision is to ban for this equipment as opposed to like using any kind of ARPA money? What's, what's went into the decision?
The decision is to bond. Um, we didn't go from our standard practice on this. And as you, you're well aware, counselor, it just takes forever to build these things. So we try to get ahead of the, the queue, which is why around this time, we, we, we try to get before you on these.
Oh, I understand that. I just was wondering why, why we wouldn't use ARPA money for this. This is public safety. I mean, that's eligible, correct?
Uh, I believe, I always defer to Jen Tiff on eligibility because she's the.
Well, maybe before we vote on this, if we could just have a, uh, a memo or a, from the, uh, Jen or from Mr. Rudd regarding, uh, why we decided to go on this route. I, I don't object to doing this. I, the fire department's done amazing jobs, especially my council district. It seems like in the last three weeks, they're, uh, they're, they've worked real hard. So I, I'm in favor of buying them equipment. I'm just wondering that maybe the funding stream we should have used maybe is, is maybe what the ARPA rule. So, um.
I, I'll get with Jen and Tim.
Okay, thank you, deputy mayor.
Counselor, if I could add one other thing, uh,
Yes.
the, these two vehicles, we are locked into pricing for right now and with the supply chain and everything. The anticipated cost is going to go up between five and 10% on the vehicles should we wait. So we're, we're, we have the quotes in hand, so that's what we're trying to get these through, especially now before, uh, the price increase to, to save money.
So when are you looking at? What, the next month? I mean, what are, what are the dates? What's the expiration on this?
I do have that. I believe it's January thirty-first, uh, was one, and as long as we give them the verbal okay, and I believe it was very similar on the other vehicle.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one question. Um, with, with these two vehicles, with the heavy rescue vehicle and the, uh, the straight ladder vehicle that you're talking about, does every station have these or just specific, uh, uh, engine companies or how, how does, does, does every station, station with these two vehicles in particular or?
Great question, counselor. We have one heavy rescue in the entire city. They respond to every fire, uh, and they're responsible for search in the building for victims. Uh, they also go to every car accident that requires extrication, what most would consider the jaws of life to tool someone out of a car. They also do confined space rescue, rope rescue, uh, trench rescue. There's our, our specialty crew that covers the entire city. Um, the other vehicle and a straight stick aerial is similar to a truck company. What we have, we have five of those in the city. Right now we're running one straight stick aerial that we switched to because of the increased, um, high-rise residential downtown. So we can reach a hundred and ten foot with that, uh, one particular vehicle. We've decided to go with another because of the increase, um, and try and place it strategically closer uh, to downtown or on the other side so that from either side of the city, we could get a straight stick aerial to, uh, high-rise residential, uh, for rescue purposes. So, to answer your question, one heavy rescue for the whole city and five truck companies that we either use a bucket truck or a straight stick aerial depending on the need.
So these two specific trucks are very heavily stressed, used every day because there's car accidents every day and things like that, which is okay.
Very much so. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, uh, I want to thank the fire department. I think you guys have been working really hard for the, especially, that's just echoing what Counselor Hogan has said earlier. It's been really rough for you guys and you guys have been keeping up. Uh, behalf of our residents, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, and thank you for your support.
All right, Madam President, that'll be all for me.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item twenty-five. Um, I do see, uh, Kate, is this one for you? Okay. This one's for me and, uh, thanks, everyone. My, uh, my name is Kate Awetter and I'm the public art coordinator for the city. Um, I'm, I reside in the city planning division. Um, so the public art commission is recommending to common council that it approves the adoption of inventive spirit, which is a sculpture work, uh, sculptural work by, uh, artist Tina Faro into the permanent public art collection. Um, this is a donation by the family of Alan Rothschild, who unfortunately passed away unexpectedly, um, this past spring. Um, the sculpture is proposed for the traffic triangle in the eight hundred block of East Genesee Street, just east of Foreman Park. There is an existing circular pad there with benches, um, that was built as part of the connected corridor. The sculpture itself is of a tall, it's a, it's about ten feet, including the base, a, a tall, stylized or abstract figure that is holding objects, um, that are, represent, uh, the legacy of invention and innovation that helped to build this community. Um, it's also symbolic of Alan himself. Uh, he was an entrepreneur, civic leader, philanthropist and inventor and owner of two U S patents himself. Um, the Rothschild family has run businesses on this block, uh, for over a hundred years. Um, and Alan, uh, Rothschild was a founding member of the East Genesee Regents Association and is president for, for many years. Um, this sculpture will join other arts installations and that are located in around Foreman Park, including Carol Eisner's swoosh, um, Colin Walport's Syracuse View stereoscopes and Locust's, uh, Syracuse Riders installation. Uh, the sculpture, uh, or the sculpteur, um, Tina Faro, um, is an accomplished, uh, folk artist who specializes in outdoor sculpture. Um, the work itself will be made of weathering. The work itself will be made of weathering steel and is of closed construction, which makes it very safe. And it will require a little or, or really no maintenance. If approved, the sculpture will be fabricated, uh, this winter and installed in the spring. And again, this is a gift, um, to the city from the Rothschild family and, and Rothschild is, is on the, is in meeting here today. And it is valued at approximately forty thousand dollars. So, um, are there any questions about this?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, um, really to just express, um, thanks for even wanting to place this in the area. I know you spoke to that it represents innovation and invention. So I did, ideal place for it to go, being that, uh, our downtown is going in that same direction as well. So I'm just going to say thank you to the Rothschild family. If anyone else has any comments, please quickly chime in.
And if I could add my comments, I, I knew Alan and I know his wife. And, uh, he was a real pioneer as an activist down there in the East Genesee Street corridor. He led to a, he was a fighter for improving that area. And I, I can't think of a better way to honor him and his family. This is terrific. Thank you.
Counselor, um, I believe Dave Mankiewicz wanted to make a comment about this. That's okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes, thank you, counselors. I appreciate, uh, your willingness to consider this. I just wanted to make you aware that, uh, this proposal was brought before the East Genesee Region Association. They endorsed it and I believe you also have, uh, multiple letters in your package from property owners in the area who also supported it. And, uh, again, uh, thank you to Ann Rothschild and her family for the donation. They, it is greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. And that was all that I had.
I have a quick question about it. So the forty thousand dollars, does that include the installation as well? And is there any kind of maintenance that you anticipate going forward with it tarnishing? Or if it's damaged or how does that get taken care of?
Yeah. The, uh, to begin with, it is a weathering steel. So, um, it will naturally weather. Actually, it's very similar to Carol Eisner's piece, um, there in Foreman Park. So that it will develop a, a pretty thick patina, um, that will protect it. Maintenance, um, will be required in terms of just, um, going and checking it at least once a year to, to remove any debris or, um, bird droppings or what, you know, whatever is accumulated around it. The city will own the, the piece. So if it is damaged, it's in a pretty, um, secure location, um, and will be raised up quite, uh, you know, at least a couple of feet off the ground. If it is damaged, uh, that will, um, be a responsibility for, uh, the city to take care of. The forty thousand is the, the cost of the, the piece itself and the installation. And to help establish a, an insurance. We know we're self-insured, but that's, that is the, that, that is the value of the piece.
I'll set on that item?
Yes.
Yes. Alrighty, Counselor Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items twenty-six through thirty-three. The first one is about the slurry seal. So I don't know who from DBW wants to speak to that.
Good afternoon, Counselor. Uh, this is Jeremy Robinson, DPW. This is to amend our slurry seal program to increase, uh, to twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine of an increase due to, uh, gas and oil price raise, rises.
So the totality of the increase in costs is basically due to the, due to the, uh, change in demands based on, on the pandemic and everything that's going on with, with cost rising?
Correct.
Can I ask?
Okay, I saw President raise their hand.
Yes, so Jeremy, can I ask another quick question?
Yes.
Because I think the only one that will probably remember would be Counselor Allen and Counselor Hogan. We asked previously if, um, slurry seal would do a pilot program for city residents. Have we addressed that again with them?
Not to my knowledge, uh, Pres, uh, but I can check on that and get back to you or start some conversations up again.
I, I would appreciate that.
No problem.
I remember that as well, Pres. All right, so, um, number twenty-seven, that, is that, that's more of the same with slurry seal?
Yep, twenty-seven, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Same. Do you want to talk about twenty-eight, uh, the sewer line, sewer main with, uh, Catholic charities?
I can handle that, Counselor. I'm Mary Rabison. I'm the city engineer. Item twenty-eight is the lining of a eighteen-inch combined sewer being performed by Catholic charities, the owner of the Housing Services Center project at eighteen oh one Erie Boulevard East. This is to meet the county's one-on-one offset requirement, which for the new counselors, when there's a redevelopment of a building, um, and you're increasing the sanitary sewer usage, you have to have, provide an offset for that additional sanitary sewer usage when there's a combined sewer. So, um, they are, to accommodate that offset, they're going to line the sewer for us to prevent inflow and infiltration and reduce sewer leaks into the sewer in basic terms. So we are, this is just an ordinance to accept that work that they are going to perform on our sewers.
Okay. Any of my fellow counselors have any questions? No? Okay.
Item twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one are all related to, uh, one of our tip projects, the north, south, east, west corridor interconnect project. Uh, this is a project to interconnect our traffic signals so that, uh, traffic flows more efficiently so that you get green after green in a sequence versus hitting every red light. This is, uh, an extension of an existing project that we have. We're getting eighty percent federal reimbursement on the project. This specific, um, project, we bid the project last year and the bids came in way over budget. So we kind of are going to phase the project. Um, and DOT has given us, given us an additional one point four one one million dollars for a total project cost not to exceed nine million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So that we can put a phase, a decent phase of the portion of, of the project out to bid. So we will be getting, um, eighty percent reimbursement. Sometimes we get the fifteen percent state Marchiselli reimbursement. Right now it's not built into the agreement for the construction phase, but hopefully that will be coming later. So it's a twenty percent local share. So item twenty-nine is amending the bond ordinance. Item thirty is amending the agreement with New York State DOT. And item thirty-one is the project authorization amendment.
I'm just kind of confused, uh, because twenty, uh, thirty and thirty-one both mentioned the, the Marchiselli is included.
The Marchiselli was included in the design phase. But it, it's not included in the construction phase. But if we get the additional Marchiselli for the construction phase, which we might get some next spring or this spring, we would, I would come back to the council and amend the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, so that's not, that's not, uh, a misprint in the book there. That's, that's referencing the, the design phase?
Yes, I believe, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay.
If the short title is, is a little bit misleading, but if you read the letter, it says the design phase.
Counselor, is that a man from?
Okay, I got you.
Is it a man? Yeah.
I got you. I got you. Okay. Okay, do any of my fellow counselors have any questions on this one?
So the state, federal with, uh, Mary, federal with eighty, state with fifteen and, and the city with five?
We got the Marchiselli, yes. But since we're not getting the Marchiselli, it's eighty federal and twenty local. But again, they make their decision on, uh, giving us Marchiselli money each spring. So they might, if we're lucky, um, get some Marchiselli for the construction.
So in order to receive the Marchiselli, that's just, you said a lottery. So there's really no, I just want to get clarification on that too.
Yeah, it's kind of out of our control. It is eligible for Marchiselli because we got it for the design phase. But it, they make the determination of what projects they fund. I don't know the formula, unfortunately.
And you don't know what you can do, Mary, to increase our chances of being looked at, right? It's just up to them to decide what they want to do with that, right?
Yes. I mean, I, I do think we do get a, a fair share of Marchiselli money. But it would be, this is a big project. It would be nice to get it on the construction phase because that's a substantial portion of the project. But I don't know how much Marchiselli they get from year to year. So I, I really don't know what our chances are.
Okay, any further questions from the counselors? Okay, if none, then, uh, move on to item thirty-two. So it's still with you, Mary?
Yes, the next two are revocable permissions. The first one is for true storage, giving them permission to construct, own, operate, maintain two hundred and fifty-four feet of twelve-inch sewer and five, um, catch basins in the Hiawatha Boulevard East right-of-way. This is, they're asking to put this facility in our right-of-way because I need it in order to make the drainage work for their project. So, um, what our policy is, is when people are putting conduit in the right-of-way, they have to pay us an annual fee based on the size of the conduit. So, um, our anticipated income would be, uh, one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty cents. But each year in August, we do adjust the, um, annual cost based on the, I think it's the Consumer Price Index. So that, so that number will increase every year. Slightly.
Okay. Any questions from counselors? No?
Thirty-three is a revocable permission for LeMoyne College to construct, own, operate, maintain a two-inch underground communication conduit going across Salt Springs Road. Um, this is to connect two of their buildings. So it's a short stretch, seventy-eight feet of two-inch conduit in our right-of-way. The estimated annual income for us would be sixty-two dollars and forty cents a year.
So Mary, um, you have to excuse my ignorance on the subject matter here. But when the, um, when you say the conduit, is it something that's visible like on the surface? Or is this like underneath?
No, it's going underneath the road to require to be installed three feet below the pavement surface. So it doesn't interfere with our, if we were to do a pavement reconstruction, it wouldn't interfere with our work. So it's not visible.
Okay, thank you. I'm very far removed from construction stuff. So I had to make.
No problems.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions from my fellow counselors? Those all sound copacetic to me.
Alrighty, I'll set.
I believe those are all my items, Madam President. Yep, those are all my items, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn, but before we do, know that we have to come back in for our organizational meeting. And we understand, same line, James?
Yes, many people have, have reached out. It is just continuous from here, same, same link.
Okay, I, but I do have to adjourn. So I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned. So moved?
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. So now I guess we go right into our organizational meeting. Alrighty, so on our organizational meeting, I am going to need a motion for election of the city clerk.
President?
Yes.
Do roll call first?
Oh, okay.
Are we doing the full thing with Pledge of Allegiance and?
The moment of silence would be efficient.
Okay.
Alrighty, we'll take a moment of silence. Alrighty, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Codwell?
Present.
Hey, Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Peniagua?
Here.
Counselor Galler, Gap, Gatherz?
Present.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Hogan?
Here.
Counselor Macho?
Here.
Counselor Allen?
Here.
Counselor Driscoll?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alrighty, I'll set.
Uh, President, um, nine to zero. Give me a break, y'all. Nine to zero, right? Okay.
Alrighty, I need a motion for election of the city clerk.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to nominate Patricia McBride for a city clerk.
And I'll second. Okay, motion, motion made, has been seconded to nominate Patricia McBride as city clerk. Counselor Codwell?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Beniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Gatherz?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Macho?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Alright, two voters and, and it's anonymous. Thank you. Anonymous.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, President Hudson, can I just for a minute?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to.
But, but wait a minute, Counselor Allen, real quick. I, I do get a vote on the organizational though, so I didn't get in the roll call.
What? What, what was? What did you say?
I said I get a vote in the organizational.
Not, I'm not sure. Uh, is, uh, someone from, um, law on here? Catherine?
It's Joe Barry, the first assistant. Typically, the president only votes in the case of a tie.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, Counselor Allen.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make recognition of Patricia McBride as being the first woman, and actually the first African-American ever elected into the city clerk position. So I just felt like we needed to recognize this huge moment in history for the city of Syracuse and just women in general. So kudos to my Katie Kate.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, everyone.
Alright.
And another, another, if I could give another line of gratitude to our, our leaving clerk, John Kapanas. Thank you for all your years and, uh, we really appreciate all you've done for us. Thank you.
Alrighty, I need a motion for election of President Pro Temp.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Michael Green for President Pro Tempure of the council.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Please call the vote.
Counselor Codwell?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Gatherz?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz? Counselor Schultz?
Yes, did you hear me?
Yep. Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Macho?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, it's, um, vote of Michael Green as pro temp. So now it's.
for Michael Green as pro temp, it's unanimous vote. All right, thank you. I need a nomination for the election of the majority leader.
I'll make a nomination.
President Hudson? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
That's okay. I was going to nominate President Hudson, but same.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a statement if I could, President Hudson. It's been my experience that city government works best when the city council is an independent and strong and equal partner in city government. Electing a non-voting member of the council to the position of Democratic Majority Leader diminishes the strength, in my view, of the council and essentially neutralizes that position. A majority leader leads by example, being able to write legislation, place it on the agenda, and then lead by their vote. On all the councils I've served on, this share, this shows your conviction is is a matter of the way you publicly vote on a matter. The common council president, as we all know, cannot place legislation on the agenda or vote on it by by anointing the president of the common council. The majority leader, this not only diminishes the position, but in fact renders it meaningless. So I will be voting no on this nominee. Thank you.
Please call the vote. Counselor Rashi, I'm sorry, Counselor Codwell?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor gathers?
I'm gonna go no.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
No.
Counselor Macho?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, the motion had been made and seconded. I would have a vote of seven to two. President Hudson would be the majority leader. Thank you. Thank you. And now I need a motion for election of the majority whip.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Joseph Driscoll as majority.
I need a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Okay, just let me catch up here. Alrighty. Counselor Codwell?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor gathers?
No, yes, please.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Macho?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, a motion had been made and seconded to nominate Counselor Driscoll as majority whip. I, the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Patricia, so the communications, is is there, you have communications? Yeah, we do have communication, our communication from you, President Hudson, requesting the organization meeting on today at this time, well, at twelve forty-five. Also, we have a letter pursuant to the charter that we follow all the rules and it has been observed. Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the rules and procedures of the Syracuse Common Council.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Please call the roll. Counselor, keep going off track here. Counselor Codwell?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor gathers?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Macho?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The rules have been adopted unanimously. Thank you. And number nine is an appointment of the standing committees, which I have already done, correct?
Yep, you have.
Alrighty, and now to the city clerk. Okay, I would like to introduce an earth's adoption, designating the Syracuse Post Stand your ass official newspaper for the city for the year two thousand twenty-two. All, I'm sorry, I have to do the vote. Yep, call the roll. Counselor Codwell?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor gathers? Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Macho?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item ten has been adopted unanimously. Thank you. Now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Please call, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alrighty, thank you all and have a good rest of your day. See you Monday. Thank you. Bye-bye.